The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
My name is Chris Wilson. I'm the chairman of the Board of Education. I welcome you to our March 6, 2019 Board of Education meeting. And if you'd all rise, we're pleased to have Precious White here to sing the national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? At the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. It's great to have you share your gift with us today to start off our meeting. You're a great credit to our schools, yourself, and your family. So, thank you for sharing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm guessing the reason you're all here, because we typically don't have quite this many people here, is for some recognition of your students. So, before I do that, though, I got so excited seeing you all here, I missed one item on our agenda, so let me go back to that. My computer, there we go. We do have a moment of silence for Theresa Terry Morocco Barton, who was a special ed teacher from 1969 to 1988, and Peter Norris, who was a custodian at Southside in Bristol Eastern. So, please, enjoy me with a moment of silence. So, we'll go back to where I was.
I'm going to interrupt you, though.
Okay.
You may notice these bags in front of all of our board members. March is Board of Education Member Appreciation Month, and I am very appreciative of the time that you all give for the kids in Bristol. And so, we have a little card that we've faced out to all of you, so you could see how happy we are to have such fine board members serving our Board of Ed. And so, each of you will be...
Thank you. Okay. Now, I will go back to... So, I'm gathering you're not here to see us, but you're here to see your students, which is the way it should be at a Board of Education meeting. So, I'll now turn it over to the superintendent to address this item.
Okay. So, we have lots of students to recognize, but first, we have a teacher to recognize from our school. Is Erin Daly here?
Hi.
Erin? There you are. Okay. Well, Erin received $1,000 worth of technology from NBC 30.
That's a surprise. They came over in response to a Donors Choose fund that we had done, and they ended up surprising us with $1,000. So, we ended up getting five tablets for kids to be using as small groups and all over the classroom. So, that was...
That's awesome. Thank you so much. And then, we have a couple of students from Hobbs School. Do we have Heaven Graham? Or Ian Mascherano? Okay. We must have not gotten the memo.
You're more honored than they are.
I'm going to call on Samantha Sarley, our supervisor of the arts, who will introduce a lot of really talented musicians and artists.
Thank you. Okay. So, tonight, we're recognizing the achievements of our students in both art and music. We will begin with the 28th Annual Connecticut Regional Scholastic Art Awards recipients. This is the largest jury student art exhibition in the state, with over 150 schools participating. The Connecticut Regional Awards were established in 1927. The national program was originated to honor the creative efforts of students in grades 7 to 12 in public, private, and parochial schools. It is now the largest and most senior program in the country. The artwork that you see up here projected on this screen is from the five Bristol Public School students who won an award and will now be presented with a certificate for their Alessandra Bella. Kevin Cruz Cruz. Genevieve Van Voys. Erica Guzman. Kate Sullivan. And that's the last one. If they're not here, we'll send it over to them. We're going to carry on. Thank you. So, for more than 30 years, March has been officially designated by the National Association of Music Education for the Observance of Music in Our Schools Month. This time of year, when music education becomes the focus of schools across the nation. The purpose of Music in Our Schools Month is to raise awareness of the importance of music education for all children, and to remind citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. With that being said, we are now honoring our high school students for their achievement in the Connecticut Music Educators Association, known as CMEA's annual Northern Regional Festival. Regional auditions are open to all Connecticut high school students who participate in their schools' jazz, choir, band, or orchestra. Each auditioning student must practice and perform a pre-selected solo piece, as well as sight read and two skills. Students receive scores from several adjudicators, and an overall cutoff score is then determined. Those who are at or above the cutoff score are selected for participation in the regional festival. Ten Bristol Public School students earned this distinction and will now be presented with their certificates. Caitlin DeFaul.
Cody, Cody, stay. Turn around. Heaven, come over here. Because we're saving applause till the end.
Hold it.
Turn around so the TVs can see you.
Isaac Feeney.
There we go.
Jordan Northa. Kayla Secot. Devora Tressman. Luke Ashworth. Ben Herron. So, all of those students who made Northern Regional, the ones that are just in front of you, were then eligible to audition for what's called the All-State Festival. This is a more demanding audition that requires our students' additional preparation. The purpose of this audition is to select Connecticut's top high school musicians. Cutoff scores are determined, and the best music students from around the state are selected. These students will spend three days in April at the Connecticut Convention Center in Hartford, learning advanced repertoire under the direction of renowned conductors throughout the United States. Two Bristol Public School students will now be presented an additional certificate for their accomplishments in the All-State Festival. Devora Tressman. Similar to the Northern Regional and All-State Festivals is the CMEA Elementary Honors Band. In order for students to participate in this elite band, they must be recommended by their teacher and selected from a panel of educators. These students will spend a full day at the Hartford Convention Center rehearsing with students from around the state in this elite band. At the end of the day, they will perform a concert in front of an audience that encompasses parents, teachers, students, and renowned conductors and educators. This year, we are recognizing five students for their achievement in the honors band. There are five.
Mrs. Sarley, can I interrupt? Because I see Mrs. Kanata up there next to you, and I see Mr. Butchewitz and Mr. Bagley...
Oh, yeah, we're going to get to them.
Yeah.
Don't worry, we'll get to them.
We've got teachers here who have inspired students, so I want to make sure we recognize them.
We will get to them. So, we have Madeline Ursani. Emily Dow. Helena Wright. So, we will now recognize a student who sings with Bristol Eastern Strawberry Fields. Strawberry Fields is a select group of Coral students who recently performed at the International Championship of High School Acappella Quarterfinals in Denver, Massachusetts. One of the songs performed by the group was titled "Change Is Going to Come" by Sam Puck. For this song, the judges awarded this soloist, out of 40 solos, as the best of the night. The student who we will now present a certificate for this accomplishment is Precious Ashley So, as Dr. Moreau mentioned, I would like to thank all of our teachers for preparing our students and assisting them through these achievements. Leslie Fernandez, Chris Monaco, Allison Massey, David Nelson, John Abushewitz, Ken Bagley, Joy Kanata, Nise Zaboa, and Michael Kodeir.
And if any of you were honored tonight and didn't get your picture taken, I believe the assistant superintendent is down in the hallway, and we want to make sure you get your picture taken.
And tweeted.
And tweeted. And all that other stuff that I don't know about. Okay. The next agenda item is the approval of minutes. You have the minutes, the draft of the minutes, in front of you. So, does anybody have any corrections, additions, modifications to those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to accept.
Motion to make to accept the minutes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and abstentions.
I abstain.
So, does Mr. O'Brien.
No, I wasn't here either.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We now go to committee reports. Our first committee will be Finance. Commissioner Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance Committee meeting met on Monday, February 11. Very little has changed since last month at this point. We are still looking at what looks like a substantial deficit. However, it is a deficit without any of the revenue coming in yet. So, we will have more information, hopefully, next month. One informational comment. Monday, March 11, which is this coming Monday, there will be a special Finance Committee meeting, likely here in this room.
It's where it's posted.
At 6:30. Has it been posted?
Yes.
Great. It was posted. That meeting will have basically one agenda item: to go over the proposed superintendent's budget for the year 1920, 2019?
2019.
2021?
20.
And to forward that to the full board for further discussion and a vote.
Following the Finance Committee meeting.
Yes. And I don't know if Dr. Dieter or Mrs. Brown has anything they want to add. We're good. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on to policy. Commissioner Taylor.
I don't have a mic, so I'll try and speak.
Otherwise, you won't be heard on TV.
Oh, no. We met on Monday, February 11, right after Finance, and we talked of two policies, one based on food service personnel and one on instruction. And later on in the agenda, we will be deliberating those items.
Okay. Thank you. And I think our final committee report this evening will be Student Achievement. Commissioner Doobie.
Thank you. The Student Achievement Committee met on February 20, and we had a few items on our agenda that were very important. Dr. Carbone gave us a very informative lecture on restorative practices, and we actually had a mock presentation of what some classrooms are working on. We also had an update on our magnet school programming, including scheduling and transportation.
If not any questions, we'll move right into my report. And part of my report this evening, we're fortunate enough to have the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, who also served as sort of liaison of the chamber to the Bristol Technical Advisory Council. And Cindy Bombard is going to share with us some of the work of the council over the last four years. But she also has some board members with her that I recognize. Betty DeCruz is here, who is our chair, and then Sue Sudecky from the Main Street Foundation is here as well. And I don't know if I missed anybody else.
Lee Mayles, who's from Lee Spring, is over here. And then, we have Larry Cavino. Are you here, Larry?
Oh, yeah.
Larry's hiding over there. You ready?
So, you brought your...
I brought my back...
You brought your fans.
I brought my fans. I have more fans, but... Well, I want to thank you all for having me here this evening. And as Chris introduced me, I'm the president of the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce. And I love saying this, we're the second-largest chamber in the state of Connecticut. We manage and work with seven chambers closely, and we have two manufacturing associations that we manage out of our office building, which is at 440 North Main Street. The Bristol Technical Advisory Council was created in June of 2014, but the seed was planted back in 2012, when the Main Street Community Foundation convened a meeting with a group of superintendents in our area communities to talk about the shortage of the technical workforce, which includes trades, manufacturing, and technology. In 2013, the Main Street Community Foundation offered a grant, and it was awarded to the area guidance counselors from our region, and they were all sent to an all-day conference at the Connecticut Center for Advanced Technology, which is called CCAT, out of East Hartford at the Pratt &amp; Whitney Building. The purpose was to enlighten our educators on the possibility of technology, manufacturing, and the trades as a great career path for students. From that point on, it blossomed. Many partners were pulled together for a conversation, which many are here with me this evening, along with being listed on the marketing piece that you should have in front of you. And this has grown from day one, and it continues to grow. The partners all became extremely interested in the possibilities of what could happen when everyone sits around the table to have a dialogue about the needs. The partners are from business, educators from all levels, nonprofit organizations, capital workforce partners, the Department of Labor, the Connecticut Business and Industry Association, which is called CBIA, the city of Bristol, our area manufacturers, the manufacturing trade associations, which there are many located here, just in the Bristol area. And we all sat together to collaborate on how best we could help each other out. The accomplishments are a long list and will continue to evolve. The following is just a sample of what has been created. We've created manufacturing programs, adult ed with Larry at the helm, that were funded through private and public partnerships. Students were able to get their GEDs while learning basic manufacturing on the floors of Rowley Spring, which helped to fill the pipeline to area manufacturers, along with helping individuals find great jobs. Additional manufacturing programs are running now, currently, at the Board of Education, along with the technical programs of both of your high schools here in Bristol. Tungusis Community College created a manufacturing roundtable with area business leaders, and now will be opening up an advanced manufacturing program at the main campus here in Farmington, complemented by some programs at the Bristol Tungusis Center. Additional programs are being created with public-private partnerships, which include our area manufacturers. Some of them are here today. New England Spring and Metal Stamping Association, which Al is a part of, and there's many others that are listed here. New England Spring and Metal Stamping was created here in Bristol in 1954 by many of the forefathers that owned a lot of these businesses, and it is still very much alive and running. And at the Bristol Technical Education Center, I call it the school up on the hill, there are programs being created there from area manufacturers and NASMA for some basic manufacturing, coiling, four-site spring and stamping. And the nice part about it is our area manufacturers have donated a lot of equipment, and some area teachers are offering, there's time on the side to help educate our students. These not only help our employers in our region, but is changing the lives of students and giving some great jobs and opportunities for our kids. With the assistance from your school, Guidance and Career Counselors, which are here today, together, we have created opportunities to explore area manufacturers by great field trips. We've created a speakers bureau. We've hosted job and career fairs to enlighten students and parents on the possibilities of manufacturing trades as a great career choice. Every industrial magazine has articles on the need of the workforce. At a recent Chamber Economic Business Breakfast, speakers from CBIA and the Department of Labor economists gave statistics on the area of growth. A recent announcement from Lieutenant Governor and President of the Connecticut College System that happened at the Science Center just a few weeks ago has talked about the creation of partnerships that are being created all over from our community colleges, our technical school systems, our public schools, just to help, the purpose to help fill the workforce needs, and how to work together to educate the student population to fill the upcoming jobs in the technology area. Through the State of Connecticut, Section 1021(c) of the Connecticut General Status, a committee to coordinate education regarding careers in manufacturing was established and recently posted their findings, which I'm going to provide Dr. Moreau a copy of that. Once again, this committee is being established, and it will continue its mission. Henry Martin is taking, our senator here in Bristol, is taking lead in this, trying to get additional representation on that committee from our central region. The statistics are showing the number of jobs, careers available to all in these fields with the ability to grow your career path while working, earning a salary, having the ability to expand your education through paid apprenticeship programs and internships. The one thing that has been mentioned repeatedly is how do we get to the parents engaged and aware of these many opportunities? Our school systems are doing what they can. These career paths offer great opportunities to children. Therefore, we are here today, and your help is needed to spread the word. We have all learned around the table of the Bristol Technical Advisory Council, that meeting's held here monthly, that there is energy and excitement on having an open dialogue on these career choices. What once was thought of a dark and endless career has changed over time to the excitement of what can lie ahead for not only each of you here today, but the workforce and for the students of tomorrow. They are paving the way into the future area of technology, the trades, and manufacturing. There is a phrase that we all use, and we all hear, "No student left behind." That is each of our goals. That's why each of you sit here today, and that's why everybody is here in this audience, and that's why I am here preaching this to you today. We are in this together, so I have extra copies from anybody in the audience that would like this. This will be posted on our website, the city of Bristol's website, and I will be presenting the same presentation at the city council meeting next month. And I thank each and every one of you for the time and effort that you put into... It's not an easy job. I've been on the Board of Ed in another community, but it's well worth it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cindy. Now, we go to the next item is sort of a legislative update. And I testified at the Capitol earlier in February, in the middle of the month, on the bill that I've spoken to you about in the past, and that was the magnet school funding bill. And my concern, as I've echoed before, is that if the state does not provide more funding to magnet schools, then it becomes an unfunded mandate for our local town, our local district, as our students attend these magnet schools. So, we've been trying to encourage the state to do that. I testified, along with David Joy, who was the chairman of the Crick Council this year and a member from South Windsor. This is the time of year when a lot of legislators are raising their bills, and these bills are getting heard by the public. You may have heard them. Yes, last Friday, there was a hearing on regionalism, and legislators sat through about nine hours of testimony about how the public is not in favor of regionalism. But I do believe that conversation will still be ongoing, because I'm not sure we can continue to do the same thing that we've been doing without, you know, putting more money in the pot. And I don't think there's much sentiment to put more money into education. So, we continue to follow that legislative agenda. I also heard testimony from the governor's representative, Secretary McCaw, and Commissioner Wenzel, and all the bills related to the governor's budget. And so, those discussions will go ongoing. You'll see hearings for like about another month, and after that, the hearings will close, and then the legislature will get down to deciding if they're going to be casting any bills or not. I will tell you, there's several bills in front of the legislature. It always amazes me every year how many new sort of bills pop up, but you see some that you can really agree with, and some you kind of question. I mean, the one that I questioned was that all schools should provide real estate training to be real estate agents. I'm not sure who proposed that bill, but I find that rather curious. And then, you see some others, like Latino-American history and African-American history should be taught in our public school curriculum. Those are some that, you know, obviously, I could agree with, but some may not. So, it is just amazing how many bills come out each session, even though we've been in the same holding pattern in terms of finances, and all these have an impact on education. As we experience mission creep over the years, every year, we're asked to do more with the same or less. But that will conclude my report, and we'll move right on to the Memorial Boulevard Arts Magnet School, and Dr. Dieter will give us an update of what that committee is doing.
Good evening, commissioners. The Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Building Committee met twice this past month. February 14, we concluded our regular business, which are updates from project manager, architect, general contractor, et cetera. Another item that we reviewed was a communication protocol to ensure that whatever we were messaging, that it was unified, one voice, and we've directed the public, as well as others that are interested, to the resources to find that information. Currently, there's a tab on the Board of Ed website that will provide you with the schedule of meetings, as well as minutes, draft minutes, as well as approved minutes of the meetings. There's a companion site at the city side, which lists the same information. There's a companion site at the city side, which lists the same information, so please check it out if you're interested in knowing more. February 28th was our second meeting. This was the, had the greatest attendance of any meeting thus far of the Building Committee, and it likely has to do with the agenda that we had for that night. We heard from Project Labor Agreement, which is PLA or Union Labor, provided us with a presentation regarding the benefits of PLA, Project Labor Agreement. And we also heard from Prevailing Wage Association and Building Contractors. These would be open shop, non-union laborers, who also provided us with a presentation regarding the advantages of their methodology. We don't anticipate taking action on either of these items for probably a month, because we did have some questions, which we have submitted electronically. We also have some work to do with following up with other Boards of Ed regarding their selection process, so we'll get back to you on that. We also had a programming presentation by Mrs. Fortin, which did identify our current pathways for students, future student enrollment at Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School. At this time, pathways include creative construction, visual arts, musical arts, television, video, and theatrical production, entertainment, sports events, and events management, marketing and communications. That concludes my remarks. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move right into the... Give him a hand. You can use a little positive reinforcing every now and then, eh? Now, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Student representative.
Student reps, oh, I have just been...
What a night you're having.
Yeah, I'm not having a good night. Okay, who is, who's going first tonight?
Abby wins.
Abby.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the Board. My name is Abby, and I'm the student representative at Bristol Central High School. The month of February was filled with new experiences that I'm very proud to say that Central has embraced. In honor of Black History Month, students put posters of quotes and facts around our school of inspirational black people who influenced America. Every morning on the announcements, our students said a quote from historical black figures and informed everyone about their incredible feats they made for America. I was beyond proud and ecstatic to be a part of a community that took the time to teach their students and faculty about the history of America that everyone should know, and that the history of minorities was not forgotten. I hope Central will continue the same event for each celebration of heritage in the future. So, I would like to give a personal thank you to everyone who was involved with this. It really meant a lot to me, and I bet to many other students and teachers in this school. Last week, the National Honor Society had a very successful dodgeball tournament with Bristol Eastern and the Central June. It was exciting to watch as students, faculty, and alumni came together and embraced their competitive and wild side while dodging flying foam balls. Even the audience had to block a few wild stray balls. The money that was collected went towards the St. Vincent de Paul Homeless Shelter. Altogether, 13 teams competed against each other. Thank you to everyone who volunteered, came to watch, and who played. Last week, Thursday, the junior class also received their NHS applications to determine who will be tapped into the National Honor Society for the next school year. This Friday, Central will be holding their annual push-up for patriots to help raise money for the Semper Five Fund. Even though it will be during the school day, students who have gym or study halls will be able to go to the gym to participate. Motivated students will also be able to stay after school to continue the drive. The Excel Club will be selling foam figures to help raise even more money for the families of disabled veterans. This evening, I would like to take the time to speak about Central's amazing Avid program from the point of view of a student who is an Avid senior. Avid is not simply an extra class to help students organize and prepare for college, but it consists of a supportive family environment that motivates and pushes each other to their full potential. Many of the students in Avid were ahead of other seniors in the college application process, and were more organized to focus on their college goals. From my personal experience, I had joined Avid in junior year, but Mrs. Farrell had always wanted me to join from my freshman year. I finally decided to join at the end of my sophomore year, when I witnessed the success of other students who were already in the program, and I knew that I wanted to join their success. After joining Avid, I gained more friends who shared the same motivation and academic dreams that I did. I gained friends that would become more like family members that I could trust, protect, and who would protect me as well. Avid is a class that became a safe haven, as well as the class in which I could work diligently towards college without distractions. What is even more incredible is that Central's National Honor Society's President and Vice President are students from the Avid program, Kenny Cantorero and myself. With the help of the Avid program, I have been accepted to Penn State, Northeastern University, Emmanuel College, UConn, the University of Scranton, and Santa Clara University. I already cannot wait to return to Central during college breaks to speak to the younger Avid students about college and to continue to be hard workers and not to give up. I'm truly glad that I joined the Avid program during my junior year, and I hope that Avid can expand and improve in Bristol. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Oh, God, okay. Thanks a lot, Abby. Okay. Good evening, Dr. Moreau, Dr. Carbone, Dr. Galloway, and Commissioners. First, I would kind of like to start off with the Black History Month and what have been going on with our classes. So, in Mr. Dave's classroom, our specialized goal program has been reading and listening to the autobiography of Malcolm X. Students reviewed civil rights vocabulary and talked about notable civil rights pioneers. Additionally, the class worked together to create a display on their class door to share their new knowledge with their peers. In Ms. Paluso's class, each of Ms. Paluso's classes are beginning with a YouTube video of a poet reading, performing his or her poetry. These videos include the likes of Maya and Langston, but also the newer spoken words like Prince Ia, and our poet, Lorette Tracy K. Smith. Ms. Paluso is able to reference from her poetry class she took with Tracy K. Smith this past summer. In Ms. Adams' classroom, in AP Gov, yeah, AP Gov, as part of their Civil Rights Unit, students did a super close read of the letter from Birmingham Jail and compared arguments in the letter from the clergyman to examine and analyze Dr. King refuted each of their claims. Additionally, students listened to the powerful James Earl Jones and read excerpts of the letter. Next week, students will be researching and presenting different projects on civil rights movements throughout the history that have been meaningful to them. In Mr. Zimmerman's class, in American literature classes for the month, Mr. Zimmerman embedded videos and visuals, as well as text into his daily lessons to analyze American values and progress towards equality. He integrated these supplemental aids as part of the units of study in the course, rather than just a standalone attempt to address these issues. Additionally, students worked to examine and discuss the value in reading Huckfin and to expose racial injustice in both historical and in the present. As a whole school event, all of Bristol Eastern High School was invited to an African-American read-in hosted by our Library Media Center. The read-in was a poetry slam for students to share the writings of inspirational African-Americans. It was held on Friday, February 15th. And then, this month, we participated in the Sandy Hook Say Something Week, which started on February 25th and ended on March 1st. For the 25th and 26th, we watched a video in homeroom, and it was an eye-opener to see how often violence, bullying, and threats occur throughout many high schools across the country. Students are reminded to confine an adult they can trust and tell them whenever they hear someone mention or threaten violent or intolerable behavior. All week during lunch waves, students were able to sign a poster in the cafeteria saying that they have an adult that they can say something to. On March 1st, students and staff wore green to show their support for this week, and it was amazing to see how united our school community was. Along with that day, the staff and faculty wore "Hello, my name is" stickers to show to students that they could always talk to them. This week showed that many students believe in safer schools, as well as saying no to intolerable actions. Thank you, and have a wonderful night.
You two both did a great job. You know, obviously, you spent a lot of time preparing this. It's like having another class, and, you know, we as a board can't thank you enough for enlightening us on these issues and what's going on in the schools.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
And as I segue to it, on March 20th, there's a Day on the Hill. CAE sponsors a Day on the Hill. I don't know if any of you went last year, but you're welcome to come. Just coordinate with Susan Average, she's out sick tonight, but it would be a great experience for you. You're going to hear from some legislators about educational issues that were really relative to you, and then you'll go and meet some legislators at the Capitol. We meet at the Bushnell and then move up to the Capitol later in the morning. So, and I encourage you to speak with your administrators. I'm sure they'll release you to join us, and if you're going to go, if you would let me know, I'll make sure I meet you there and save you a seat, and we'll take you around. So, look forward to it. Okay, we're now, the superintendent's report, finally. I'm back on, in order, so Dr. Moreau will give us her report.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to thank all of you and members of our community who went to our schools last Friday as part of Read Across America Day. Great turnouts, excited people. I do believe I saw a picture of Commissioner Vibert reading. Might have been tweeted out somewhere. It is, it is amazing to me how the audience of students, regardless of what age they are, are captivated by someone coming in and reading to them. And you're never too old to hear a story, so it's a lot of fun. Kindergarten registration began last Friday, so if you know any child who will be five by January 1st, please have them come to this building, to Central Registration, and have them enroll, so that we have a good sense of how many kindergarten children we're going to have next year. So, at the budget presentation, last, was it last week? Yeah, it was probably last week. And I told you, there was some news I really couldn't tell you, but it was good news, because it hadn't been released by the state yet. So, I want you to know that the Accountability Index, which we've given you several presentations on, Mrs. Fortin gave you some information on the growth portion of that, which was really outstanding data. And there are 12 measures. We had all of our information, but they hadn't come up with the district index yet. So, last year, our index was 72.9% of the points that you can earn, and the 1718 index was 75.3%. So, I just personally, yeah, thank you. We will...
You need to learn in this district to celebrate once in a while, and moving up three points doesn't sound like a lot, but it takes a lot to move that metric up, so that's a great achievement.
It really does, and we're very proud to have made that growth. And I will also tell you, in my time in Bristol, we've always chased the state average. We've wanted to beat the state average. So, Connecticut Performance Index is 74.9, and Bristol's is 75.3. So, all good stuff. We have our high schools to thank in a good part for that, for getting more students taking and passing college and career readiness courses, including the AP, and you saw those data recently, that we have almost the reverse of a gap in our students who are taking our AP courses. And I think, Abby, our whole row here have AP, are AP students. So, that's awesome, and I think we have some more in the group as well. Those are courses which prepare our kids for learning after high school, and even if a student doesn't go to college, they're going to benefit from being in an AP course, because it's rigorous. And next... Team, as well as the work that they do in schools. So, in the area of inspiring and cultivating talent, Dr. Galloway has been meeting with each of our administrators and going through the hiring requirements, because we want to make sure we're getting the best and the brightest. He is already trying to pursue some UConn graduates, and if you're not aware, there are only 15 students in each discipline who graduate from UConn every year, and we want them. So, he's out at the head of the line there. Our BCBAs, or Board Certified Behavior Analysts, are working with our teachers to help our students with their student success plans. So, a child who may be having behavior issues in a classroom, these very trained, highly trained individuals come in, they come with a paraprofessional, they set up a plan, they work with the teacher, the paraprofessional remains for a while to make sure the plan remains intact. That's work that's been ongoing and will continue to be ongoing throughout the district. Every Board of Ed night, we have met with our District Continuous Improvement Team during the day, and today, we were in the study phase. Mrs. Fortin has created some pretty dynamic work. It's Study Plan Act, so we're studying our data. We looked at our Next Generation Accountability results, and trying to come up with some strategies for what our next steps are. These are all written down, they're available to everyone through a shared Google Drive. And so, let's say there's a high school principal, actually, both high school principals are on the committee, but they then take it back, open it up with their school improvement teams, same with elementary and middle, and work through the data and try to figure out how to improve their practice. Our special ed teachers have been trained, more teachers have been trained in the Wilson Reading Program, which is a Tier 3, which is the top of the pyramid intervention program. In the area of organizational effectiveness, we had a group of administrators and our Safety and Security Director participate in ALICE training. We hosted it, and so we got some slots, and we had people from other towns participate in the training as well. It is training for extreme emergencies, and you can see the acronym there for ALICE, Alert Lockdown Inform Counter and Evacuate. We present our budget on the 20th of March at 6:00 in Council Chambers. Hopefully, we'll have some members of the audience who want to watch that process. Our Athletics Department began using Family ID, which is a really good management system that parents can go into, the school nurse can go into, to make sure that a student has all of the physical that they need to have, that they've done the concussion pre-test and post-test. And we'll cut down on a lot of extra phone calls that folks are having to make, because they can just open the system and look and see if it's complete. We've been working with our city IT folks and our IT folks. This is a shared services plan that actually has really started to gel, and we're trying to make sure that nobody has any redundancies and that we're all communicating what's happening. We had a project with putting new cameras in schools. We're talking about getting those online and making sure everyone who should know knows how to get into the system to download video, and so it's a process as every other is, in making sure that we have the right people trained. We're going to be moving to Google as well. A lot of us are already in Google, but all of us will have, will no longer have the @ci.bristol.c t.us, will be @bristolk12.org, much simpler email address to give people, and we'll continue to use the platform to share documents with one another and have conversations. Right now, you can have teachers in four different schools looking at the same document and making comments. It's a pretty amazing tool for us, instead of somebody spending 20 minutes crossing town to work with their colleagues. Community partnerships, you see how small the print gets as we get busier and busier. We're going to be meeting on Monday with the Regional Manager at DCF, and talking about bringing some liaisons into district. These are social workers who will be available for our staff to call when they're not quite sure whether or not they should make a report to DCF. We're hoping that we can standardize some of our practice. We're also going to be having face-to-face training. We've already had two schools participate. Other schools are signing up for face-to-face training, and we're going to make sure that everyone participates. We're going to have a list, so if you miss it in the school that you're in, you'll go to another school to make sure that you get this training. Stafford School is planning a multicultural family community event later in March, and hopefully, we can get all of this information out to you, where they have their families sharing all kinds of information about their family, including their celebrations, anything that's unique and special, or that they think others will have fun learning about. I already said that Carly presented, she's right behind me, presented our program information at the Arts Magnet Committee, and April 3rd... And April 3rd is Special Education Day at the State Capitol. And Dr. Dieter has a flyer that's gone out. It's got a lot of different groups that have come together to participate, and I'm going to be planning on attending with them. Our Unified Theater Group will be presenting a performance at that event, so that'll be pretty exciting.
On the ALIS training, I've had a few parents who've contacted me about their concern about some of our work that we do in practicing these demos and whatnot. And they feel like it's a little bit creating some anxiety. So does that training that our staff went through, do they talk at all about that, or do they just talk about the drills and how to execute them?
No, they're very extreme. They actually, in ALIS training, they bring in people who act as if they are the invader. It's pretty extreme training. That is not what we do when we have drills. We want our children to know what to do, where to go, who to listen to. As children get older, they are able to comprehend more of it, but we haven't made any decisions about rolling out ALIS training. We wanted some folks to go, get some idea. There have been districts, in fact, I believe St. Paul did a training with their staff only, where they did a simulation. It can be pretty traumatic to adults, as well as children. And so, we're very, we're taking baby steps in terms of how far we're going to go with that. But we do have, we've put out reunification plan information that's really important for our families to have, like really even on their refrigerator. Because if we ever need to evacuate a school, we have a very comprehensive plan about reuniting children with their families. And we need parents to know what that plan is, so that if they ever need to pick up their children, they have all the information that they bring with them, because we won't release their children unless they bring what they need to bring, so.
You know, I just, I have some concern. I know the public has some concern about when we do these drills, are they themselves creating some anxiety? And so I'm sure we're being very thoughtful about that.
We're being as thoughtful as we can. There are some children who take things, become frightened more easily than others. And I would say that if a parent is concerned about their child's anxiety, that they really get in touch with the child's teacher, so we can address that.
We've now moved on to our consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any items out of our consent agenda? Anybody wish to pull any items out of the consent agenda? If not, I think I'm ready to accept the motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 8-1 through 8-2. It's been properly moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We are now down to public comment. And if you didn't realize before, we have a new secretary with us this evening, pinch hitting for Susan Everett, who is sick. We have Tara Landon, and she's going to get over and-
There is none.
There is no public comment. Okay. So we'll move right along. But we're still glad to have you with us, Ms. Landon. All right, we were on to deliberated items. Our first item is a preliminary calendar report, and I think we're ready, this is a second read, so we're ready to vote on that. Does someone want to summarize that, or are we just going to go with it?
It's up to you.
We talked about it last week.
We did talk about it.
Has there hasn't been any feedback in the intervening month?
Someone asked that we shade a particular day, I think the Teachers Union, because we do our initial August training, and then the Friday before Labor Day weekend is not a student or a teacher day, so we've shaded it, although our buildings will be open for them to come in, as most teachers do, to want to finish setting up their rooms.
Okay. That's not a school day for students or faculty?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the calendar? If not, I think you're ready to vote, so I entertain approval of the calendar from 2019-20 and 2021. Someone will offer up that motion? Mr. Grabowski? Ms. Doobie, will you second that motion?
You know, why not? I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions? I want to make sure everybody gets in the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next item is 10-2 Equity in Avid, and I believe Ms. Fortin is going to lead us off with some participation with some friends.
Lots of friends.
And I've had some great sneak previews on some of the information, or you've had some great sneak previews on the information that I'm about to share. I did want to start with some performance data, because we have some exciting news, as Dr. Moreau shared. So as Dr. Moreau shared, our Next Generation Accountability Index just came out last week, and I wanted to point out two elements tonight, as they relate to the topic that we're going to be talking about. The first one is college and career enrollment. And so the state of Connecticut wants us to look at the number of students we have in our district participating in two or more AP classes, or two or more ECE classes, it's early college experience classes through UConn, or two CTE, Career and Technical Education classes. And you could see from this graph, let's see if my laser can work all the way down the room. There we go, that we've had continued growth from 15-16 to 16-17, and now we've had the highest results that we've had so far in this area. We also, in performance, have continued growth year after year when we're looking at this index. So again, as we're looking as a district and in both of our high schools, our percent of students, college career readiness achievement, our percent of students who are achieving the benchmark in reading and in math, and earning a 3 or better on AP courses, has increased and improved over the past three years. In addition, we have some data that was just shared with us by the College Board. So this map is a College Board document that shows AP participation by district with the class of 2017. And I've pulled out the, our region here. What you want to see is dark blue, because dark blue shows the percent of students who, as seniors, enrolled in an AP course. Dark blue is more than 50% of your class has taken an AP. And I wanted to pull us out, because you can look at our surrounding towns, and you could see where the dark blue is, Bristol, Farmington, Cheshire, Avon, West Hartford, and the towns that are near us. So that's pretty exciting for the work that we've been doing in our district. And then we look at performance, and while we do have some room to grow here, because we still want to be in that dark blue, we are close to that in the dark green. So you want to either be dark green, light blue, or dark blue. And so again, you could see where we are compared to other surrounding towns, and the percent of students who are achieving a 3 or better on those AP exams, and what towns are, we're still striving to meet. This next slide, Dr. Moreau referenced in her presentation, but I think it's one of the most exciting pieces of information that we have. One of the board's goals is to ensure that all of our students are meeting and exceeding our high standards. And so the College Board shares that as part of their mission, to reduce the achievement gap. And the way that they're encouraging our state in particular to look at this is by looking at the percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, who are taking our AP classes. And so what you would want to see is the percent of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch within the district to mirror the percent of free and reduced lunch students who are taking AP courses, showing that your AP enrollment represents your student population. Bristol is only one of two cities across the state that does not have an equity gap. And we actually don't have an equity gap, as you could see, by 15.1, so we're even beyond that zero. So we should be very proud of this. And so when I'm asked, why do we see this, some of it, I'll maybe go back here, some of it is because we have increased our opportunities for students to enroll in AP courses based on interest, expanding those opportunities so that more of our students can have access to courses. But the other major factor that is influencing that is our Avid program. And that's why we have all of our Avid students here today. So there are two pieces that I wanted to point out here. And so the first is here, and who's making up our, who's making up our Avid group? This is a class of 17-18. 78% of the students who were in Avid during, as a senior in 17-18, this is based on self-reported data, would be the first in their family to attend college. 67% are economically disadvantaged, and 15% were English learners. This post-secondary information, though, is very exciting. We have 93% of that group applied to a four-year college. 89% were accepted into a four-year college or university, and 93% had completed the FAFSA and received financial aid. But here's the AP number, and I apologize that it's so difficult to read. I think that projector might be a little blurry down there, but this number here, that's circled right here, that's 81%. So 81% of this group was enrolled in an AP course, at least one AP course. We also have some data about college persistence. So oftentimes, we can see, we can support our students in getting into college, but we also want to ensure that they're successful once they're there. So what you see here is from the class of 2016, all of these graphs pertain to the first-year enrollment. Did they persist in college after their first semester? So this is based on 20 students who, after graduating from Bristol Public Schools, remained in communication with Avid to report how they were doing. And what you could see here, in this group here, 83% of our Avid graduates remained enrolled in a two-to-four-year school, particularly under the category of students who qualified for free and reduced lunch when they were in high school. That compares to 62% as the national average. That even beats our Bristol average, when we look at the same population for students who are not enrolled in Avid. We have a 78% college persistence rate. So again, we can attribute much of our success to our Avid students. When I talk with teachers oftentimes about data, we think we're talking about numbers, but I think it's really important to remember that each number is really representing our students. And so that's why I felt it was so important for you to hear directly from our students, who are doing all of this hard work and are accomplishing these achievements. And so Abby gave us some insight into what Avid has done for her already, but I'm going to invite her back up, and she's got some other Avid peers who are also going to share. So we have Senior Abby Grant Christie and Ray Peters from Bristol Central. And I have Lori Chen, Alyssa Gonzalez, and Abigail King from Bristol Eastern. And they would like to share a little bit more about their experiences with an Avid.
So I'll start first. Dear Commissioner, I'm here today to share with you all my journey with Avid. Entering high school, I didn't know what to expect, and I was full of anxiety. Thankfully, I was recruited for Avid, where I was surrounded by people like me, who are first-generation college-bound students. We all came from different backgrounds, with 85% of us being minority. We're Chinese, Hungarian, Canadian, Italian, Puerto Rican, Dominican, Cuban, Greek, and Turkey, but we are all united as Avid students. If you ask any one of us as freshmen where we imagined we would be now, we wouldn't have known. Yet because of Avid, we found our answers. Throughout the tutorial support and academic tools we have learned in Avid, we have been continuously challenging ourselves. As seniors, 92% of us have been taking at least one AP, UConn, or ECE course. Because of our dedication to our study, we're proud to say that as of today, 100% of us have been accepted to at least one college. As a class, we have received a total of 42 acceptance letters from UConn, Temple, Ohio State, Massachusetts College of Pharmaceutical and Health Science, Iona, Western New England, University of St. Joe's, Stony Brook, King, Johnson's Wells, UMass, Sacred Heart, U-Hart, Becker, UNH, CCSU, ECSU, SCSU, and so many more. 100% of us have also applied to at least two scholarships thus far, and are currently researching financial aid solutions to help us continue our education. Lastly, I want to personally thank Avid. At home, my family doesn't speak English, and no one has ever attended college. The whole college process is a dramatic new experience for me. Ms. Kelma, Ms. Calphane, and Avid staff have not only helped me with all those processes, but always given me advices to ask what I could do. Without Avid, I wouldn't have met all the people who I consider as family and friends. I know we will be inseparable even while I leave Bristol Eastern High School. I wish everyone could have experience with a program like Avid, where you not only feel comfortable being yourself, but also grow to face upcoming challenges. Thank you for your time. Okay, hello all. My name's Abigail King. I'm a junior at Bristol Eastern High School, and I've been in Avid ever since I was a freshman. I believe Avid is an overall accepting place, and there's not really any judgment. It's okay to ask for help there. As a team, we look forward towards our future and prepare ourselves accordingly. During the time I've been in this program, I've learned a lot about myself and my interests. I let go of the fear I had of harder classes, and I used my confidence to sign up for my own Tungus classes. So this year has really helped me grow, and I appreciate the support from my Avid family. Thank you, guys.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Gonzalez. I'm a freshman Avid student and class president of Bristol Eastern High School. This program was designed to help students stay focused on the goal of going to college. None of my family has gone to a traditional college, and this class is putting me on the track for it. My class is like a family, with contrary beliefs, different music tastes, and polar opposite lives, but we all group together for one thing, help. Avid is so helpful, and I would have never known about Cornell notes or the eight intelligences, how to study and how to learn, not just for a test, but for knowledge. I am so grateful for the opportunity to be in Avid, and I look forward to continuing it until graduation.
Good evening. My name is Noelie Velasquez. I'm a senior at Bristol Central High School. I joined Avid in freshman year, and going into Avid, I was a little bit fearful, because I had never had any accelerated classes or AP classes. And throughout this whole program, the past four years, it has helped me tremendously on figuring out my learning styles and different ways to study, because I had trouble with that back in freshman year. And these past four years, I've met so many good people. I've created friend groups that have helped me, you know, figure out the path that I want to take after high school, and, you know, what I plan to do. And being a first-generation college student, I've always had questions about college and, you know, what route I should take into knowing, you know, what comes after high school and all the responsibilities that I'm going to have. And this program has truly helped me prepare myself, and I can gladly say that I'm ready for college, and I've been accepted into all 10 of my applications. So, thank you.
My name's Ray Peters. I'm a Bristol Central Avid student. I run cross-country, indoor track, outdoor track, and I'm a police explorer. And I just want to thank all of you for coming out here tonight to hear me speak about Avid. I think it's an extremely important program. I was like, Dr. Moreau, I saw that you brought the statistic about like 75% or that number went on, and I think that's exemplified by me personally, because freshman year, when I first came to Bristol Central High School, I didn't feel like I kind of belonged, and I didn't really do my, the work I was supposed to do. Like, I'd do my tests, my quizzes, but when I went home, I wouldn't do my homework, because it didn't matter to me. But like, when I went to Avid, it was like, you have to do your homework. And me and Ms. Farrell would always get in arguments over whether or not-
Lovingly.
-whether or not homework was important. And I remember I would argue with her all the time, because I thought she was wrong and I was right. And that's how a lot of students my age are, we always think we're right. But eventually, I decided to try what she was saying, and now I'm an accelerated student, and next year, I should be taking, I think, maybe two APs, which is kind of a big step for me, because I've never even gone to accelerated, because I always thought, like, that's where all the nerds are. But now I'm in those classes, and it's really worth it, because I pay attention to those classes, I get good grades in those classes. While I was an academic, I wouldn't pay attention, I'd sleep in class, and I feel Avid really helped me just make the step forward from being like an immature eighth grader into becoming a high school student who's college-bound. And I think all students should be able to go to Avid and just be a part of the experience, because it truly does help you move on, because like, you, I don't know how to explain it, like, when you're- why it's important, and how to get your, like, self together in order to continue. 'Cause there's so many bright kids like me who just don't, aren't in the right classes, they're in academic classes when they don't belong there, and they feel, this is useless, I already know this. They sleep in class, don't do their homework, and do amazing on tests and quizzes, but you need to do the whole part, and I feel Avid really shows that. I wanna thank you all for your time, and have a great night.
So clearly, they say it much better than the numbers. Oftentimes, in our Board of Education meetings, we can see what those numbers are, but it was really great to hear the voices of our students who are behind those. I would also like to take a moment to recognize the teachers that we have here. So I saw on this side Latonya Farrell and Corey Nagel, who are Avid teachers from Bristol Central. And I see Carolyn back there, Carolyn Kelma from Bristol Eastern, and I did see Mrs. Burdowski here earlier. Back there, okay. They're trying to hide a little bit. They want their students to shine. So I wanna also thank our teachers. An important part of our Avid program is for our Avid teachers to be sharing their practices among their teams of teachers that they're working, with whom they're working, so that those strategies that you're hearing, you're hearing some of our students talk about, really have the opportunity to spread across the school. So thank you. Thank you to the students who are here tonight and sticking through this meeting, too. I know you're later on the agenda, but I really appreciate everyone coming here. Thank you.
And students, again, you know, sometimes when you're a board member and you implement a program like Avid, you always wonder if the investment was worth it. And you coming here tonight and sharing that really puts some real-life experiences and stories to it. So I never had any doubt that Avid was worth it. I happened to go to the training in Philadelphia many years ago, actually with Mrs. Fortin, I think. And so I was always been a big proponent of it, but seeing and hearing your stories tonight certainly cemented that that's, it was the right investment for us to make for our students. So thank you.
Policy. Who are, item 11-2, policy, instruction comparability services revised. Are you gonna take that one, Tina?
No, they're mine. They're mine.
Okay, there you go. Okay.
So we have two policy revisions this evening. Policy 3542.22 actually has an appendix added to it on civil rights complaints that there's a procedure for with the federal government if there's a concern about food service. This was also located on our website under the Food Services Department, and I recommend approval.
It's been moved. Is someone gonna second it? Good. We got everybody in the minutes then, I think. Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next policy is a revision to policy 6161.3, comparability of services, dealing with Title I. The prior policy was from 1995. Lot has changed since 1995. And so we did review this policy at the Policy Committee, and I recommend approval.
Recommend to approve policy revision 6161.3.
Wait a second. Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next policy is a revision to policy 6161.3, comparability of services, dealing with Title I. The prior policy was from 1995. Lot has changed since 1995. And so we did review this policy at the Policy Committee, and I recommend approval.
Recommend to approve policy revision 6161.3.
Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If that includes that agenda item, we now move to new business. Does anybody have any new business? Having no business, we will now move to information. We'll start with City Councilman Kelly, and we'll work our way around. Nope? Mr. O'Brien?
I've been on vacation.
You've been on vacation. Okay. Welcome back. Commissioner Cagiano.
I do have two pieces of information, which actually, Councilman Kelly was with me. The NAACP grand opening was this past Saturday. Lexi Magnum's speech, it's, the grand opening was very reminiscent, I thought, of our vision of the graduate and our recent community outreach program. In February, and this is a quote from Lexi, "In February 1909, 110 years ago, the NAACP was created by both colored and non-colored people, for colored people and all people." They opened up on 55 South Street at the HRA building, and they'll have office hours from 9 to 1 every day. So I thought it was noteworthy. The other thing, I don't see Dr. Galloway here, but I've been driving on the highways, and I think I have seen Dr. Galloway on billboards in the city of Hartford for what I think is the, I was driving, so I didn't get the details, so I wish he was here. He'll have to correct us next time if I'm wrong. But the April 2 student, or education fair, so he's on the billboard.
He didn't let us know about that. We're gonna have to...
So I was driving through Hartford, looking for Dr. Galloway.
That sounds like Dr.
It's a digital one, so it comes up and then it goes away.
That sounds like Dr. Galloway not to toot his own horn on that.
I thought I had a comb out of him. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Taylor.
I do not.
Commissioner Weber.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Hens, Mr. Grobowski, Commissioner Dubey.
I have no information.
Okay. We'll start right away and do liaisons, and we'll go from that side. So you get the, get the microphone anyway.
I do have liaison reports for myself and for Commissioner Giantonio, who is not here tonight. So I'll start with West Bristol. West Bristol School celebrated Read Across America, as did every other school in the district, by inviting families in for a stories and snack event. Over 250 guests joined K-5 classrooms to share literacy fun. In addition, students in grades 2 through 5 submitted essays to recognize their superheroes or individuals who have had a significant impact on their lives. Students also participated in Jump Rope for Heart, and they raised over $5,500 for the American Heart Association. Now for Commissioner Giantonio's SEPTO information, there is a mock PPT meeting Tuesday, March 12 at 6:30, and that is at Chapter 126 Sports and Fitness Center. Registration is not required, so you can come that day if your schedule is fitting. And then, as we already heard, there is a special education day at the state capitol, that is Wednesday, April 3, 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grobowski.
So Friday was Read Across America Day, and I was invited to read at Southside Elementary School, two fifth graders. I didn't realize I was going to read to all the fifth graders, I just showed up and put in the cafeteria. I read the book, All the Places You'll Go by Dr. Seuss, and I wasn't sure how the students were going to, you know, understand. And I asked them afterwards, I said, you know, what'd you guys learn from the book? And all their hands were up, and they analyzed the whole book, and I was surprised. And they asked me some pretty interesting questions about being on the Board of Ed and all this other stuff. And I thought it was funny, at the very end, I was leaving, and somebody kinda ran off from this class and came right up to me, kinda cornered me. And says, I have a question for you. And I said, yeah. And he said, you guys like impact curriculum that we learn and stuff? And I said, yeah. And he said, I have a question. Why don't we learn math, like how our parents used to learn math? And I stood there, and I thought to myself, how do I even go about answering this question? So I'm very impressed that our students critically think, and they're asking questions. So that was, it was fun.
That's cute.
Commissioner Hens.
I guess I'll attempt. I'm not gonna be able to match it, though. As Dr. Moreau mentioned, I also read at Southside. I read to the first graders. I Can't Set the Hand, which is my favorite children's book. It's by, I think the author's name is Holly Cameron. And again, the first graders had great questions. We had a wonderful conversation. There were a lot of volunteers there. It's a great school, as all of our schools are. And I highly recommend that book. I have it if anybody wants to borrow it.
Commissioner Taylor.
Tomorrow night at Green Hills, Rick Miller, the CEO of Kids at Hope, will be there to speak to parents and give a presentation about the Kids at Hope cultural framework. So it is a program that has been implemented somewhat last year, mostly this year, and now the parents are actually going to be kinda trained in the program. So as a parent, I'm excited to go, and I'll make sure I report next month, see how that went and what we learned. And also on Thursday, Green Hills will host a night of TED Talks, which are researched and presented by the students in the gifted program. So anybody from here is welcome to come.
When is, when is that?
Next Thursday, the 14th, at, I believe it was 6.
Yeah. Commissioner Cagiano.
Stafford School from Principal Irvine said, we celebrated Dr. Seuss Week last week with fun activities each day, including Dr. Seuss Math Scavenger Home, a Dr. Seuss trivia, classroom teacher swap for lesson, kindergarten with third grade, first with second grade, and fourth with fifth grade, and a special guest reader during our school-wide town hall meeting with Mayor Zapposse. Stafford was also the recipient of an assembly called the Science of Suds. This was a no-cost assembly, it was facilitated by the Connecticut Science Center. They received a LEGO grant and contacted us to arrange for the special event. And that's all I have.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Corey Ford.
Okay. City Councilman.
Well, I wasn't going to, but I think I'm gonna have to follow on the Read Across America theme. I went to three schools, so I believe that means I won. I was at Southside, and I was reading a Dr. Seuss book, I can't recall which one, and it was apparent on the last page that you were supposed to put this to song. And I wasn't about to do it, so I looked at this little girl, I said, I'm supposed to sing here, would you do it? She came right up, first sentence, she froze a little, but then she fought through it, and she did such a nice job. And I said, I'm impressed, I saw you had a little bit of stage fright there. And she said, yeah, I did, but I found my groove. So I believe she was in fourth grade, and if there's any music teachers here, you have a potential star upcoming. So I can't tell your name, I guess for privacy concerns, but you'll know her when you see her. Thank you. Yes, and I like your Dr. Seuss socks, by the way, Commissioner O'Brien.
Okay. I have nothing. So at this point, the next item on our agenda is to reconvene, excuse me, to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's contract, and Attorney Jessica Ritter will be attending with us, and it'll be just the board and Attorney Ritter.
So moved.
So moved. So I would entertain a motion for...
So moved.
So moved. Oh, second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we now, we will move up into executive session.